Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Tiger 12 School Board. I will now call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. For your reference, I did want to let you know that we met in executive session prior to this regular session, which was convened under ORS 192.6602F, that allows us to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Chair.
All right, hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agendas presented.
A second.
Motion was made by Vice Chair Heimis and seconded by Director Bowman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing then, we'll move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, and with that, we will move to recognition and good news. And I will invite Lisa and Casey.
Well, this evening is a special evening because we have the honor of recognizing all of you, our school board members. And so, next slide, please. So, to introduce everyone, if you are not aware of who our school board members are, Tristan Irvin is Board Chair, W. Heim is Vice Chair, and Board Members Ben Bowman and virtually with us is Jill Zershmead. And so, we just thank all of you for your dedication to TTSD schools and your commitment as volunteers to our community to serve the school district students and our families. We just thank you so much for all of your work that you do year-round for us. And next slide, please. I just want to share that the TTSD School Board supports student achievement by focusing on vision, standards, assessment, accountability, alignment, climate, collaborative relationships, and continuous improvement all year long. And we just thank you for all of your work. We have an annual tradition that we've done for several years now, I can say, where we ask our librarians of five schools, we rotate every year, a book that they would appreciate having in their library, and then we dedicate it on behalf of our school board members. And so, Casey is here, our district librarian, to share what those books are that our librarians have chosen with the schools and the schools that will be receiving them.
Thank you, Lisa.
This year, School Library Media Coordinator selected for Tigerd High School in honor of Board Chair Tristan Irvin, "The Beautiful Struggle by Tana Hossi Coats", and for Toallity Middle School in honor of Board Vice Chair David James, Charlie Hernandez, and "The League of Shadows" by Ryan Pulejo. For Byram and Durham Elementary in honor of Board Members Jill Zershmead and Marvin Lynn Stein Tinglers, "All New Stories by the Master of Scary Tales" by R.L. Stein. Library Media Coordinator Heather Roberts says both schools love scary stories and goosebumps. And I can say that is true, as the other collection of short stories we have, "Scary Stories to Tell in the Dark", which was written ages ago, still cannot stay on the shelf. So, that one will get a lot of circulation. And for Twelden Elementary in honor of Board Member Ben Bowman, "Beautiful Me" by Dembella Moore.
And "Beautiful Me" has been, was, is very popular. It was actually chosen last year for two schools. And then again, this year, because it's such a popular book. And so, we just thank you again for your service to the school district. And we will present our books, and then if we could get a quick photo of those of you that are here.
We need to get a cardboard cutout of me to just stand up next to those guys.
Thank you.
And Chair, if you indulge me, I would ask the Cabinet to join me in a round of applause for their service.
Well, thank you, and those are wonderful books, and I know all of them. And I'm going to say that I love the one that was picked for me, so that's super exciting. So, really, thank you for doing that, and I love that tradition. And I'd love to go in the library and just peruse all of the past board member books in there and all the dedications. That would be really a little mystery kind of project to do, is find all the books. Any other board members want to share before we move on? Any thank yous?
I'll just say thank you. I think this is by far the best way to say thank you to to school board members is with books and libraries. So, thanks for continuing this tradition. We appreciate it.
All right, so with that, we will go into our student rep reports. Who drew the short straw? Who's going first?
I'll start us off. Winter Formal is on the 28th, and with the Winter Festival, just a day before. The Winter Formal is on the 28th, which is a Saturday, and the Winter Festival is the Friday right after school. And tickets can be purchased on the Tigerd High Instagram. NHS projects are taken off, and we have a blood drive on the 16th at Rice Church. And another project students are taking on is hand crocheted baby blankets for babies at the NICU. In just a few weeks, they have posted and made over 10 blankets. And if you can't crochet, that's okay, because they also take donations as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great way to get involved. I know I'm making my mom crochet a blanket, because I can't personally crochet. But I don't think we've covered this, but we had a pretty successful food drive through NHS. Winter sports are going on, and my friend went to a basketball game, and she said it was pretty intense, and I think Tigerd won, so that's always good. Orchestra and park concerts happened on the last week of winter break. Those also went pretty well. There's so much of the orchestra concert to support my friends. It's beautiful. We have an ICC meeting and club meeting still going through. We have club presentations coming on soon. We have the end of Semester One fast approaching, which is stressing many people out. But it's okay, we are practicing good study methods and definitely studying throughout the weeks and not cramming.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for the updates. I've been to a few basketball games as well, and they're very fun, so love that. Dr. Ricky Smith, Superintendent Report.
Thank you so much. There are several items to share with the board this evening. The first being that the next session of the Integrated Guidance Community Engagement will take place here will take place here tomorrow at the Training Center. Dinner will be served from 5:00 to 5:30, with the session beginning at 5:30 and ending properly at 7:30. Tomorrow night's session will focus on our middle school students and families with the elementary level session to be held here on Wednesday, January 17. Our community has responded enthusiastically to these sessions with over 50 students, staff, and community members attending the high school session in December. We encourage all interested students, parents, staff, and community members to attend. McGay, while we held the first of three Future Bond Task Force meetings with district administrators that will inform the larger community long-range facilities planning meetings later this year in preparation for the next district bond. Today's session focused on outdoor spaces, specifically playgrounds, fields, security fences, and activity spaces. Upcoming sessions will focus on school infrastructure such as roof, windows, HVAC, plumbing, parking lots, and safe and welcoming schools such as school access control and security, cameras, and fencing. And lastly, as a reminder, there will be no school this Wednesday, January 11th, due to Licensed Staff Inservice Day, and next Monday on January 16th, in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, who would like to go first?
I don't have much, but I did just want to give a special shout-out to Board Chair Tristan Irvin, because I stepped away from the board position, and Chair Irvin volunteered to take on this new role with new responsibilities. And it happened to be really challenging times to take over the role with a lot of like need to respond to emails, schedule additional meetings, you know, schedule executive sessions, which are challenging to navigate sometimes. So, I felt guilt throughout that process for handing that to you. But you've done an incredible job in the short amount of time. You've had to do more than most chairs would have to do in their first month. But you're doing a great job, and thank you for stepping up and taking on that role.
Well, thank you. Yeah. Director Zershmead, I see your hand up. Or is that an old hand?
Nope. Well, I have old hands, but it's a fresh old hand.
To be clear.
I just wanted to, I wasn't fast enough on the draw. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the books given to libraries in our names as a thank you for board appreciation. It's really a neat thing, and I'm very grateful for it. And I know the Stein books will be really popular, because every time I'm in the Byram Library, those things are flying off the shelves. So, I'm stoked about my book. But I also wanted to say congratulations to our state legislator, Ben Bowman, who got sworn in this afternoon. And I'd like to just remind my fellow board members that now only one of us can talk to him about any specific issues at the legislature, because two of us would be a quorum of the board and would break public meeting law, and we wouldn't want to do that. So, he gets off easy from Tigerd to Toallity. He only has to listen to one of us at a time. And then the last thing I want to say is, I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but I'm lugging around a virus, and I didn't want to share it with all of you.
Well, we hope you have a speedy recovery and feel better soon. And you also stole the thunder of wanting to congratulate our newly sworn-in Representative Bowman, who was with us, and that is a really huge honor and a really big deal. And it's really exciting to kind of, so many of us that have known you and watched this, and now we get to see you there, and we saw your pin, which is very cool. So, just big congratulations. And thank you for all of the leadership and all the work that you've done on this board during your tenure as a board member and Board Chair. And yeah, thank you. So much love in the room tonight. Really love that, as it should be. All right, so Patty, I'm looking to see that there is still, and confirming there's no public comment for agenda items. All right, so with that, we will move to Reports and Discussion. Item A, Presentation of the District's Fiscal Year 21-22 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, with Director Moore. And welcome Tara, as well, up on the screen with us.
Good evening, Chair Irvin and members of the board. Yes, this evening, Tara Camp from our audit firm, Polly Rogers, is joining us virtually to give the report on the audit. And before I turn it over to her, I'd like to say a couple words about the comprehensive, or the annual comprehensive financial report, which we just completed the audit of last month and have submitted to the various agencies that require a copy of the report before the end of December. And the report has a lot of pages of numbers, and I don't, you're not expected to review it front cover to back. But I always like to suggest read at least two portions at the front end of the report. The transmittal letter, just pages one through four, that gives a background of what's going on in the district, even more so on the program and the local economy side versus the financial information. And also, the management's discussion and analysis on pages 15 through 25. That's another narrative report with some tables and charts of numbers that gives the general summary of the outcome of the financial statements. And we always like to advise that you read those together. That's the kind of the standard advice and guidance for that portion of the report. And then another useful section of the report is in the back, the statistical section, that again provides some financial information summary, the revenue capacity related to property taxes, debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and then operating information. So, those are always useful for the layperson to look at. Again, you're not expected to understand all of the other detail included in the report. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tara, so she can give her report to the board. And we'll be happy to answer any questions also.
Thank you very much, David. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. Thank you for having me here this evening to present the results of the June 30, 2022 Financial Statement Audit. My name is Tara Camp, and I'm a partner with Polly Rogers and Company, and we are the Financial Statement Auditors for the district. And so, what I'd like to do this evening is go over the Governing Body Letter. That's a nice little letter that we send along with the audit that summarizes everything that we required to communicate with you. So, I'll start on page one of that letter, and that summarizes the purpose of our audit. And for the district, our purpose is threefold. We perform the Financial Statement Audit, and that is where we test the financials created by management to ensure they're fairly stated. Next, we perform the Compliance Audit, known as Oregon Minimum Standards, and that is required of all governments in the state of Oregon to test different compliance areas with laws and regulations. And lastly, we perform the federal single audit over various grants and federal dollars that the district receives to ensure the district is in compliance with those federal monies. So, on page two, we cover the results of the audit, and the results for the district are excellent. For the Financial Statement Audit, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion with no reservations. For state minimum standards, we found no exceptions or issues requiring comment. For federal awards, we found no issues of noncompliance and no question costs. And we did not issue a separate management letter, which would highlight significant areas of concern, so that's excellent. The finance office and the district, everyone we work with are highly professional. They do such a good job with their work. Going through an audit is a ton of work, and we do not make it easy on them. We definitely test a lot of things and put them through the wringer, and they're so nice and patient with us. So, I want to thank David and Sarah and all of the team for that as well. And then moving on in the letter, in the first paragraph, under Significant Audit Matters, we noted that the district implemented GASB number 87 for this audit, and that's a big new accounting standard around leases. Moving down to page three, we encountered no difficulties in performing and completing our audit, and we had no disagreements with management over accounting or financial items. And then lastly, on page four and five, we summarize future accounting standards and auditing issues that are coming up. It's really good to be aware of, because these things have a potential to change the financial statements and also create a lot more work for the finance office. So, it's good to be aware of those things coming out. So, overall, excellent results for the audit, really great job, and I'd be happy to take any specific questions if you have any.
Directors, any questions?
Just thanks to the Polly Rogers team. How long have we had a relationship with them as our auditors? Do you know, David?
A long time.
I don't know the exact years, but yeah, quite a while.
Oh, sorry, Tara. Go ahead.
I just said I don't know the exact years, but definitely quite a while.
More than I've been on the board, so at least 16 years.
Wow.
It's a long time. So, thanks for the work you do. I was speaking to a colleague in education administration who was saying that the marketplace of education auditors is really challenging right now for districts to find highly qualified people. So, I feel like we're in a really great spot to have highly qualified and competent auditors looking through our books with us to help create better. So, thank you.
And I would just add a huge debt of gratitude to our finance department, Director Moore, to Sarah, all the folks that are putting all of that together, and year after year, for 30-plus years, I think, have been getting these incredibly kind of four-star excellent audit ratings, really being so precise and transparent and thoughtful around our district and its finances. And it shows year after year, and so, thank you so much for all that. I know that's a lot of work. And yeah, and it shows every year in these types of audits. All right. Oh, Director Zershmead?
Yeah, so I just wanted to add gratitude to our Financial Oversight Committee. When Director Moore mentioned that we don't need to read the pages and pages of numbers, one of the reasons is because we have the Financial Oversight Committee, and that is a group of community members who are qualified in accounting to read all those numbers and understand them. And we rely, I rely very heavily on that committee to make sense of the document, so that I then have the luxury of only having to read the narrative parts, which, as an English major, I can understand. So, I wanted to say thank you to our Financial Oversight Committee too, as well as all the other people you mentioned, Polly Rogers and our team.
Well, and that's a lovely segue, because our next Reports and Discussion item is the Financial Oversight Committee Report. So, Director Moore will stay up here with us and give us that.
So, Jim Kellerher, our newest committee member, was scheduled to be with us this evening. So, he hasn't arrived yet. I think he was going by the times indicated on the agenda. And I said likely it'll be much, won't be much further ahead, but I'll do my best to share what he was going to share this evening, and maybe if I stall a little bit, he'll walk in the door. But just to remind the entire board and everybody in attendance, the Financial Oversight Committee is made up of two members. Director Bowman and Vice Chair Heimis are the two assigned board members to the committee. And then there's also three appointed community members.
I think he's arrived.
Okay. Just in time. You sit by me. So, the committee meets twice a year, and Jim's going to describe in detail what the agenda is including. We included the agendas and the minutes for the two meetings in 2022 in the board packet. And there's a, I don't have the board policy number off the top of my head, but there is a board policy specific to the Financial Oversight Committee. And of course, the committee is meant to perform in an advisory fashion for the board and all things related to finances. And with, if Jim is ready to go, I'll turn it over to him. He's, many of you know Jim. He's a longtime parent and patron of the district. And I've been able to, also works in serving school districts, not our district, but I've known him for a long time. Glad he's a member of the committee now.
Thank you, David. So, yes, I'm Jim Kellerher. I'll be providing the annual update for the Financial Oversight Committee. It's got five members, so I'm new this year. I joined the committee. We had some turnover, so I joined in the October meeting. Includes Director Heimis and Director Bowman, and congrats. I heard it on YouTube, but and then I said, I got to get over here quickly. And then myself, Chair Marsha Chapman, and Shannon Moxley, who you'll all probably know, because they've been involved for quite a while. So, thank you, Dr. Ricky Smith and the board for inviting us here today. I mean, it's twice a year. As I mentioned, it's an advisory capacity. We focus on four areas, reviewing the systems, financial systems and controls for the district, meeting with the external auditor regarding the district's financial records. We also have some extra duties that the board has asked us to look at, which is help reviewing insurance coverage and the district's investment policy, pretty much if there's excess funds that come from the property taxes that get paid upfront and then get spent later. And if we're able to invest some of those funds and earn money for the district. And then the committee will participate in special projects as needed. There weren't any special projects this year, but an example would be I'm helping select the bond underwriters, and the committee might put some people on that board. I'll go into some highlights in terms of what we looked at this year. From assessing and helping review the internal financial processes and controls, each meeting, we go through a questionnaire that's provided to David and the controller. That goes over several areas. So, financial transparency, is the board getting the financial statements that they need? Is the community getting the financial information they need? They may prepare, for instance, information for the bond committee and the like. Legal compliance, so there's some things that, from a financial perspective, the district needs to comply with. So, we ask, you know, are they meeting those compliance issues? Then we have questions regarding the systems and controls, right? So, are the, you know, do you have the resources to implement the controls that you need? Are there any areas concerned that we need to know about? And what changes there would have been during the year in terms of your systems and controls and processes? All right, so that happens each meeting. In addition, each meeting, we meet with the auditors, so we get an update from the auditors in terms of where they are in the process. So, from a timeline perspective, are there any challenges that they're looking at in terms of completing what they need to do? And then they'll also give us a heads-up on what's coming down the road in terms of additional rules that the district's going to have to meet from an accounting perspective. So, from both the questionnaire and meeting with the auditors, the committee didn't have any concerns that came to our attention. In terms of the couple other tasks that we help with, so helping review the policy around investing the excess cash that we may have, we met with the financial advisors twice, actually, both in April and in October this year. And you wouldn't be surprised, because interest rates have gone up, and so, for many of us, when interest rates go up, that's a challenge. There's a little bit of a silver lining for the district, because when the interest rates go up, they were able to invest some of those excess balances and actually earn a return at a higher rate than typically been able to over the past, you know, several years. So, that was, we got some updates on that and what they're trying to do. Again, no challenge, no concerns here, very prudent process. And then the last piece is going over the insurance requirements for the district. You know, from a market perspective, the district had You know, from a market perspective, the district had put into the budget increases for the insurance coverage that they're going to need from a budget perspective. That's not really our purview, but in terms of making sure that the insurance is covering everything from a risk perspective and controls, again, no concerns from that perspective.
Any questions for Jim?
Board?
No questions, other than I got to see Rowan twice in the last week, one of Jim's sons. And I know your youngest is now continuing the tradition of going to excellent, an excellent school on the East Coast. So I just wanted to congratulate you on the private matters as well, but thank you for your service on.
Thanks, Ben. Yeah. Thanks, everybody. Awesome.
I should say thank you as well. It's, you know, great being in those meetings and it's very informative and you know, I have a finance background, but nothing to the extent of like what these guys are doing. So thank you so much for for your expertise. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I would just echo my colleagues and their gratitude and for this work and again, not even being in this particular committee, but from reading the reports and just sort of getting that really high level understanding that is really helpful to kind of understand the inner workings and sort of breaking it down with those four main buckets in a way that you are responsible for in terms of the financial systems and that insurance coverage and investment account. So that's incredibly helpful and, you know, this committee is clearly a really well-oiled machine, especially when we're talking with Tara Camp and the audit goes so well. So I think that's a lot to do with the committee and the folks that we have on our committee. So thank you.
Thanks.
I'll add one. What Jim said, the one the one piece, it's a regular event during the two meetings is Sarah and I, as the controller and the CFO, we get to share anything, any concerns. Not there, there are any, but it's just a practice. We excuse Dr. Ricky Smith from the room and the committee gets to ask any questions related to any concerns of anything related to financial manners. And then Sarah and I exit the room and all of the committee gets to ask the auditors, are there, what are their concerns, if any, and we never know what they say because the information never shows up in the minutes, but we haven't gotten any negative feedback, so.
No, absolutely. And I would just say that our job is actually made easy because of the support we get from the staff, but and the auditors. So I appreciate that, Tristan, but our chair, Urban, but at the same time, that's, we're really a function of the good work that they do, so.
Director Zershme?
Yeah, I realized that Jim wasn't in the room when I said earlier my gratitude for the Financial Oversight Committee. So I just want to reiterate that I appreciate, I've sat on that committee and I really appreciate what you guys do for us. I also wanted to mention that there are actually not very many school districts in the metro area that have a financial oversight committee to give them that extra layer of of security and confidence in their budget. And we are very fortunate to have that committee and have dedicated members of our community willing to serve on it. So thank you.
Cool.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. And with that, we are going to move to action item A. And this is going to be the vote from an executive session that was held earlier this evening on January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. We met in an executive session under ORS one nine two dot six six zero two F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Specific minutes from that executive session will not be made public, but the board is required by Oregon Public Meetings Law to make its decision in an open session. So with that, is there a motion?
Chair, I move that the Tiger Twelton School District Board of Education uphold the superintendent's recommendation regarding the matter. Discuss in executive session on January ninth.
Second. Motion was made by Vice Chair Heimiz and seconded by Director Bowman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will now move to a roll call vote, starting at this end. Director Bowman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Heimiz?
Aye.
Director Zershme?
Aye.
And I will vote aye for a vote of four to zero to zero, the motion passes. And we'll also be sending a letter with our decision to that group. All right. And with that, we move to action item B and we get to welcome Director Moore will write back up.
This evening, we're also asking the board to consider adoption of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget calendar and I just wanted to share before you consider that, I want to share some of the highlights and the key dates that are in the budget calendar. Next meeting this month, we'll have the demographer here to give the annual ten-year update on the enrollment forecast. And so that, that's a big piece of the budget process and give you a chance to consider and review those enrollment projections and we're also going to be working as a cabinet over the next few months with doing some program evaluation and to help inform what's in the budget and we're going to be kicking that off actually tomorrow during the cabinet meeting. And of course, we have the legislative session that's getting ready to kick off on January twenty-fourth officially and is scheduled to run through June seventeenth. So a lot of decisions will likely be made that will impact budget for the school district, including the amount of money we're getting from the state. And I don't have the exact date, but I believe around the first of February, if not before, the governor will be releasing her proposed state budget, including the state school fund amount proposed for the next two-year budget period. And then as a follow-up to that, state law requires that the Department of Education release the amount of the state school fund by district based on it's usually based on that governor's budget on around March first for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. And of course, we're finishing up our integrated guidance plan, a community engagement. And so just it's noted in the calendar that there will be various forms of community engagement likely through April, at least part of April, related to the budget, including the integrated guidance plan. And we also have a placeholder to include any messaging to schools and staff related to the budget and the board, of course, as far as what estimates may look like before we convene for the formal budget committee meeting on May twenty-fourth. And then the board will consider adoption of the budget on June twenty-sixth. Any questions or any other items that we didn't address that are on the draft proposed budget?
Director Bowman?
I do have a question. And I hope this will be an irrelevant question at some point, but we know the state's CSL projection would be a relatively significant cuts budget for our district. Would, with the decisions about what we're cutting or how we're going to make those cuts? Would the community engagement for those decisions that the board ultimately would have to make happen in this current existing structure? Or because I think I vaguely remember Maureen saying, former board member, that back in the day, they were had like hearings about these kinds of cuts. And I, again, I hope that is not where we're headed, but I do, I am curious how we would structure that.
Yeah, we, the budget calendar itself is pretty general. Basically, we have the dates, you know, or the, the months indicated for that type of community engagement if needed. So we haven't had a lot of internal discussion yet, either internally or with the board on what that might look like. We'll be doing some, probably over the next month, six weeks, we'll be doing some preliminary modeling on what, you know, once we have an idea of what the governor's budget is and at least after March first, when we get our initial estimate on the revenue side, we'll have an idea of the dollars, the dollars we have to work with. And then we'll, we'll be doing some estimated as on the expenditure side, which mostly involves, and the general fund mostly involves personnel, because eighty-five percent of our budget is payroll and related costs. So likely that would probably be the timeframe when we have enough data to put out some modeling saying, here's, here's where we are with our intended use of reserves and what kind of shortfall that might look like.
But we would, there would be an opportunity for committee members to say, we don't think we should do this, or, you know.
Thank you. And part of our, our process, going back to what I said at the beginning is that program evaluation work is going to be real key for us this year because you know, we, I've been getting questions about how are we going to process additions to the budget? And I have to remind people that, well, we have our our smarter school spending strategic budgeting process, which involves looking at, you know, which programs are working and where do we have to put our dollars to, as Dr. Ricky Smith has reminded us that, you know, we need to, if we're going to meet these goals in our, in our strategic plan, what's it going to cost us? Well, that depends on what we put in place in the form of strategies and initiatives to implement and and if there's, so that kind of alleviates if there is a shortfall or and magnifies shortfalls potentially by moving dollars around to try to make those implementations and new strategies happen.
To put a bit finer point to that, I think that there's a step prior to that, which is in terms of our advocacy at the legislature and helping them to see that, given the fact that education is one of the three top priorities for now Governor Kotek and bringing the information forward from the strategic plan that you all have devised and the metrics that we have put in place to get our students to eighty percent or better proficiency. Being able to assign a cost to those percentages and present that for the legislature's consideration will be our, our main goal in hopes that we can get to a place then where in terms of options relative to having to trim back, that they are not as draconian as they could be without that. But certainly, you know, any, at any point where we are talking about potentially reduction in days of instruction, reduction in staff or programming, absolutely, that would be something that we would, as we've done with all things with our community, we do that in partnership with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the two, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made by Vice Chair Heimiz and seconded by Director Zershme. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will move to a call vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Moore. All right. And with that, we move to our next section of public comment for non-agenda items. And I know that Paul Morrison is here, so you can make your way to the, the area up there. And as you're getting settled, I will read the rules for public comment. This public comment is for non-agenda items. The Tiger Twelton School Board meetings are public meetings, meaning that the business of the board is conducted in open meeting for the public to observe as required by law. However, regular public comment at board meetings is a policy choice of the school board, not a legal requirement. As the board values input from our students, parent and district community members that we serve, the board provides these opportunities for community members to provide input on board topics. In addition to public comment, community members may submit written comments to the board secretary at each meeting or email comments directly to the school board. The email addresses of the school board can be found on the district website. Public comments are limited to three minutes and should be brief and concise. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations or programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning specific district personnel. We are also unable to hear your praise or commendations about district personnel, but invite you to submit your commendations to the superintendent. So before you start your comments, you will go ahead and share your name and zip code. And then Vice Chair Heimiz will be timing your comments and he will hold a one-minute signal up when you have one minute left. And then you will hear an alarm or the stop card when your time has expired. If you would like your public comment to be reflected in the meeting minutes of the board meeting, please provide a written copy to Patty Roberts, our board secretary. Also, please know, as has been mentioned this evening, the public comment is an opportunity for the board to listen to the community in general. We, as the board, do not engage in dialogue in this portion of the agenda. Instead, we are here to listen. Additional public comments are always welcome to be submitted to the school board by email as we receive many. All right. And then just make sure the mic, when you push it, turns green and you should be all set.
It looks, it looks green. I can hear myself.
All right. So as soon as you start, you can.
Well, thank you. And first off, before I even start my comments, congratulations, Director Bowman. You know, us Tweltons worked with Senator Wagner with some great success and I'm really looking forward to being able to engage you as well in some of the initiatives that I'm involved with. My name's Paul Morrison, nine seven oh six two, and I'm here on behalf of the Twelton High School Athletic Booster Club, also known as the Twelton Backpackers. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit that supports athletics, band, choir at Twelton High School. Some of the major projects we have funded in the past include a concession stand on the main field, a weight room on campus, uniforms for multiple sport teams and many other items as requested by the school's athletic director, Ted Rose. I'm here tonight to bring the district an update on the Twelton High School videos, video scoreboard for the main field and give special recognition to several who are instrumental in making this project happen. First, we'd like to thank the district school board for working with the backpackers last spring on approving the video scoreboard for the Twelton High School main field. There are a few people we would like to thank. There's many people we'd like to thank because of time constraints. We can't name everyone, but first a big shout out, and I see him over here, David Moore, and his work on financial aspects of funding and the technical ins and outs of managing the funds of this amazing project. Second, I'd like to thank Darren Bernard for always returning our phone calls and helping us set up the preliminary meetings with maintenance and contractors that were essential to finalizing this project. Finally, we need to acknowledge this project would never have happened without the amazing work of Kevin Montevue. His knowledge of district policy, city codes and overall construction issues was instrumental in making this project happen. The video scoreboard on the main field will be installed sometime in late February. And the framing has already been completed and we expect final operational scoreboard sometime in late March or early April. The Twelton Backpackers have already raised eighty-one thousand dollars in sponsorship money, although this is gross, not net. David, it was still a substantial amount of funds that will be able to pay back additional pay back any additional overcost for the project and to begin funding additional sports and choir projects at Twelton High School. Although there are several items high on our list, including a new sound system for the main field and video cameras to coordinate video with the scoreboard. Remodel concession stand with permanent bathrooms is my first step. These and several other important projects are on the drawing board. And of course, it's up to Ted Rose, Michael DeLerba, the future backpacker boards and the district to make those decisions. The video scoreboard project began as a vision of athletic director Ted Rose in two thousand sixteen and became a reality when we began the Twelton Brew Fest as a major fundraiser for the project. Over the last three years, we have been silent because of COVID protocols. But I'm happy to report that on January twenty-eighth, our fourth annual Twelton Brew Fest will be held at Stickman Brewery. We invite everyone to participate. We invite everyone to participate and attend this amazing fundraiser event. Tickets are available at tweltonbrewfest.com. Thank you for your time. And of course, if there are any questions, please feel free to reach out to me or any Twelton Packpacker board member.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting at seven twenty PM.